Clevenger.
President.
Phil Giffen.
Here.
Jim Monroe.
Here.
Sally Rattarty.
Here.
Rich West.
President.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you want to do your consent just in the front row? Pardon? You're recording this in the front row? Oh, yes. Just for everybody who's on the phone, this meeting is being recorded. So just a reminder that if you participate in the meeting, you're also given permission to be recorded. All right, so approval of minutes. Could I have approval of the December 23 regular meeting minutes, the January 12 work and regular meeting minutes, and the January 19 work session?
Also move.
Thanks.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then I also have approval of the December financial reports.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I know we have redevelopment commission appointments next on the agenda, but I also know that Jim circulated his memo, distributed his memo out, that we had asked him to take a look at the appointment to CRC and serving on another board, and asked him to look into the specific complaint file. So Jim, I know the council members have read the report, and what I thought I'd do is have you summarize that report to the council and the public, and then give the council the opportunity to accept the findings in your report or not accept them, and/or discuss any points of the report that they might want to discuss as MRI review?
Yeah, that'd be fine. As I noted in my memo to you, I was trying to explain, but I thought the scope of my charge. And in preparation of that, I list things that I reviewed, Indiana statutes related to establishment redevelopment commission, statutes, Indiana statutes related to conflict of interest. I reviewed the portions of the Barnes &amp; Thorpe handbook concerning redevelopment commissions. I looked at the Indiana criminal code, is it for the conflict of interest provisions there? And then I reviewed minutes of CRC in 2020, reviewed some of the financial, reviewed some of the claim things. I reviewed a draft partnership agreement between CRC and Velt Culver, and then I reviewed that as Velt Culver, those were provided to me by various people, but thanks to Karen Sheehan, it was the one that provided both of the minutes and those kinds of things. And I guess in summary, I note that it has been a practice for town council members to, for example, when they are serving on Boys &amp; Girls, Culver Boys &amp; Girls Club, and it's under a new name now, but that when it comes to the council taking action to make a donation to the Culver Boys &amp; Girls Club, that those sitting on the board abstain so that they don't have to worry about even an appearance of a conflict of interest by, in effect, the council making a donation to a board on which they sit. And I'm not necessarily saying that that's the same standard that should apply in a redevelopment situation, but historically, I note that began, you know, Culver's only so big, there's only so many folks that are willing to serve on boards, and good people that do that. So you have to kind of take that into consideration in an outward, the minute risk of something kind of going astray as opposed to their helping out. So then I looked at the criminal behavior, and the criminal code provides a public servant who knowingly or intentionally has a punitive interest in or derives a profit from a contract or purchase connected with an action by a governmental entity served by the public service with conflict of interest. And my review of the CRC minutes and Velt Culver and all of those things, you know, the statute goes on, so punitive interest means an interest in a contract or a purchase that the contract or purchase will result or is intended to result in an ascertainable increase in the income or net worth of the public servant. And there just wasn't any information, evidence that I could find that any of that kind of thing went on. So as a result, I just, you know, I know there was some allegations of crimes being committed, but in my opinion, certainly nowhere near that being the case. The conflict of interest, the ethics violations is a little less standard. The charge, I guess, was that they were voting to fund and develop Culver projects was unethical because, and I basically say that I kind of found that as unfounded as well. And again, you follow, was there money that was voted, and did it end up in the pocketbooks of, you know, the people that are voting it? Well, no. And in fact, in most of these cases, there was a couple of CRC investments in kind of projects involving Velt Culver that funded some minor things, but, you know, there was a charge of $105,000. Well, there was talk of a possible partnership, but that didn't even follow through, and there just wasn't any of that that I could see. So, you know, as far as I, as far as I could tell, I guess I'm getting kind of the bottom line on all of this, that there was not a conflict of interest in what was done. And that's even, even holding redevelopment commission members to a higher standard. It's a little tricky in my mind with CRC and Velt Culver, because they sort of have this, I think it sounds to me like a lot of the same goal in mind. And so you can see how approval of funds transferred from redevelopment commission to Velt Culver, if they're, you know, the same mission, they're getting the same accomplishment. As far as I was concerned, that wasn't a conflict of interest, it didn't go into anybody's pocket, it wasn't voting themselves money, it was for a common kind of project. However, having settled that, and I know that there might be some disagreement with this latter, I kind of went on to talk about CRC members serving on non-for-profit boards, and I guess in particular Velt Culver. And I guess I distinguished, I think there's a difference between an elected official serving on the town council and an appointed official serving on redevelopment commission, and then also serving on other boards. And I guess, under that scenario, I felt more comfortable if that wasn't the situation. Yes, we could go back and we could follow kind of our historical rule that redevelopment commission member, when they're talking about voting funds to Velt Culver, or whoever they're going to vote funds for, Boys &amp; Girls Club, whatever the case might be. You know, abstaining if they sat on the board for non-for-profit that they were making the donation to, but the redevelopment commission members are, you know, they're appointed by this body to follow through with the policies that this body sets up. And I sort of view them as, you know, you guys handle the claims and the checkbook payments and so forth, and the way the redevelopment commission is set up, it's kind of like the savings account that the town has. And you guys really are establishing policy that you want, you know, to give direction to the redevelopment commission. So those members, you know, are doing things in the best interest of the town, and because of the way their situation is, they have some special funding to sort of get special projects done, so to speak, things done, so to speak. And if redevelopment members can take those funds that you've entrusted to them to do your thing, the problem I have is, is that even though maybe the goal of the order of non-for-profit, Velt Culver, maybe that's the project that they want to do and are all in line with, you know, at some point, maybe not. And I guess that's the distinguishing factor, and it just seems to me that, and I know Rich probably doesn't want to do this, but it seems to me that if we appoint somebody on the redevelopment commission, it would be better served, it would be best if those people were not on other non-for-profit boards that may get donations, may do business with, even if they are same goals, same projects going, not really a conflict of interest, but from a policy perspective, from the council, I just think that it would be in the best interest to do that. And, you know, it's an easy, it's an easy line to then draw and not worry about. And you may disagree with me, I'm not saying you can't do it, I mean, you can, we've done it, I don't think it's been a problem, but I guess going forward, it just avoids any appearance of a minority if we do that.
I think you answered my question, one of my questions was, should, you know, if the council member sat on Velt Culver's board, you know, we had that same scenario, someone came to council, but you made the point that that board has a different fiduciary responsibility with those funds, and they're appointed by this board, so you distinguished between an elected official and an appointed board member, because that was one of my questions about, and I know. Did anyone else have a question or concern or discussion point?
No, I think you clarified it, and I think you did it very, very well. It's clear with, to me, what he intended to say, and I think it's, good job.
Any other thoughts or comments or questions?
Well, I'm sure that that took some time, and I want to thank you for looking into that for us.
Yeah, thank you very much, Jim.
That was a good point.
Well, just time to keep everybody on.
Arms away.
Arms away.
So then I, I guess I would recommend that we, as a council, accept Jim's recommendations and memo and consider this for policy moving forward? Is that how you guys would like to handle this?
I'd move for that.
I would second.
Okay. Did you get all that, Karen? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Jim, we really appreciate your time.
Yeah, no problem, I hope everything works out.
Very well written, by the way, as well as you present. I enjoy reading your writing. Okay, so we'll move to redevelopment commission appointments. Karen had the, I think, recirculated the spreadsheet. We have five spots open for a year-long appointment, three appointed by council president, two by council, and then there's also the one spot open for a non-voting member appointed by the town council president or from the school board. So for the three appointed spots from council president, I am putting down John Rogers, Paul DeBenedictus, and Sally. And then I will make official the Karen Schuman appointment from the school board for the non-voting member spot.
I would like to nominate Bill Clevenger as one of the two appointed positions by council.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 I would also like to nominate Gary Perrott as the other position on redevelopment.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Okay. Did you get all of those, Karen? All right, thank you. All right, thank you, everyone. Next, we have second reading for ordinance 2021-001, an ordinance to restate and revise the rates charges and regulations for the Culver Union Township ambulance service. I think we did this on first read at the last meeting. Does anyone have any questions or comments? I know we read a lot of the rates from last time we had Jeff at the meeting. Also, any questions or comments, or are you ready to pass this on second read?
So move.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, is it all right if I go ahead and put this on next agenda for third read, since our rate's involved, and it's up to you? Are you guys comfortable passing a motion to suspend the rules and pass it on your read?
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and pass it on to the read.
I second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Jeff, if you're on the call, we thank you for your work in this. Know it took a lot of critical thinking and meeting with the council, so thank you very much. Okay, next, we have first reading of ordinance 2021-002, amending the stormwater utility rates. And so since it's first read, well, how much of this do we want to read? You wanted to summarize again?
So, yeah, I'll move if you want.
Yeah, go for it.
So on this one, it's just a rate change, so we would be looking at increasing the stormwater utility rate per housing unit over three phases, is what we discussed, and I had tentatively filled those in. It's phase one would take effect July 1 of this year, phase two, January 1 of 2022, and then phase three, January 1 of 2023. So the rates would increase in phase one to a residential per month cost of $2.50, a non-residential commercial cost of $5, and condo, hotel, hotel, and condo, you get $10 per month. Then in phase two, it would go to $3 residential, $6 non-residential commercial, and $12 condo, hotel, hotel. And then in phase three, which would again take effect 2023, the residential rate would go to $3.50, non-residential and commercial would go to $6.95, and condo, hotel, motel would go to $3.90, which in the study we had done at Baker Tid, they recommended the increase over three phases, they didn't give specifics on the days, but we talked about anywhere from 18 months to about two years, and the final rates were what were recommended.
Question for clarification, these are incremental increases, they aren't compounded, so in other words, does it go up 10, and then go up 2, and then go up 3, like 5, it's just goes from 2 to 3?
Correct.
Correct, that's what I thought, that's what I thought, I just wanted to clarify that.
And again, we scheduled just our first read tonight, should advertise for a public hearing at the next meeting, so we'll take a public interview.
So any other questions?
I would recommend we approve ordinance 2021-002 on first read.
Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Aye.
Opposed.
And so we'll do the public hearing at the next meeting and second read at the next meeting. Next, we have first reading of ordinance 2021-003, amending the salary ordinance, and I have a copy of that here. Okay. Ordnance 20, I'm just skipping all the whereas language. Ordnance 2020-012 is hereby amended in the following particulars: change the pay to the position of building commissioner to $615 bi-weekly stipend. The building commissioner will work for 16 hours per week. The town shall cover the cost of boots for each full-time and permanent part-time employee in the utility, police, and EMS department up to $150 per year. Any cost above $150 shall be paid by the individual employee. Changes will be effective upon passage. And the word stipend means an N in there, just for clarification. Any questions or comments, you guys, on this? I have a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay. Karen, would you prefer to go ahead and do second, third read? So council, are you comfortable suspending the rules on second and third read and passing?
So move.
Second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, next, we have the economic development proposal. We talked about, I believe, at the last meeting, and decided to wait until this meeting. Any thoughts since then, or discussion points? And I know this kind of came up with our CRC interviews, I think it was one of the questions Bill and I put on to see if people would participate in moving forward with the plan. Any thoughts?
What was, what was your fee? $7,500 total, and we build monthly $1,875, and I think the terms were, is it about four months? There was a list of specific items, but we thought about four months.
She'd be meeting with several different groups at several different times.
Yeah, and I think one of the goals of that was to form a coalition of stakeholders and get everyone off the ground and running toward the planned development. But I think it possibly could, depending on how those stakeholder meetings go, could take a different shape or form, like, I think she was trying to be broad enough and specific enough at the same time that, depending on how we move forward.
It was, review issues and challenges identified during economic development sessions in the stellar process, prioritize the top three issues to focus on in the plan, draft a tentative work plan focused on those top three issues, and evaluate level of participation in groups, commit long-term to addressing the prioritized issues. During this, during these meetings, we will discuss the strategic process for community planning for impactful change. Provide assistance with the improvement of facilities, facilitate the larger group meetings, expecting group meetings every 30 days for progress, and have work collaboratively towards the success of an economic development plan.
Make sense?
It does.
So, and Cheryl's company name is CR Morphew Consulting. Move forward, or?
I think without anybody, you know, assisting, that an economic development program will kind of sit there and not move forward, so I would like to make motion to approve CR Morphew.
Okay.
Was it corporation or incorporated?
LLC.
LLC.
Consulting.
For the sum sheet quarterly.
Okay. Motion by Sally, is there a second?
I second the motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, we'll let Cheryl know and get back to you guys on a schedule. And I'll go ahead and communicate with her, just knowing, you know, I don't want to, if she, I'll just make sure she knows. Okay. So next, we have on the agenda, the archive social, that is, the archiving of the social media pages that Karen had talked to us about the last meeting, and Karen would like us to make a decision on whether we decide to do that or not. And I'm just bringing it up on my computer, trying to recall what the end price of that was, was it between $250 and $500 a month? Yeah, so the amount to do that would be between $250 and $500 a month. Any thoughts or questions about that?
I have a question. Karen, I was looking through one of their websites or somewhere, they have a deal, do they have $199?
I was looking today.
The economy?
Yeah, it's, we're going to fall somewhere, kind of depending on how many accounts we have them covered, is where it's going to fall. So it may be the 200, which is $199 to $500. I was looking today quickly and didn't, couldn't find the pricing, so.
Okay. Well, I think it's worth it, I've, most that I can understand this, I think it's worth it, what we've gone through and passed and so forth, that if we can archive all of the social media, and I guess we have to determine which social media.
Can we primarily just use Facebook right now? I think somebody has a town, was it Twitter account?
There was one for stellar communities that had something called by stellar.
Yeah, it's technically not us, however. Right. Steve, we could probably be on the lower end, since we only be doing Facebook, and we're not like such frequent posters that would take. Yeah, we probably have to take a look at, so we have a Facebook, like, the town has a Facebook account, the park also has one, EMS, I believe, has one, I know the fire department has one, so we kind of have to take a look at, at those and decide who all needs to be covered.
Can they all be combined? Or is it, are there four separate accounts?
Right now, it's four separate accounts.
I mean, it'd be nice if we could combine them, just because it's Town Culver.
Well, you might be able to combine the archiving contract.
That's what I'm saying.
Not the pages themselves.
Not the pages with the contract, yeah, that's, that's my point.
That makes sense. So do you want to tentatively approve the contract, or are you wanting to get a quote for, once they dig in and see what we've got, or what are the thoughts there, Karen? Do you have a? I honestly don't really have an opinion on this, so I'm just presenting the information as it was presented to me. Yeah.
I'd like to see a cost on combining.
You want a specific cost?
Yeah, that makes the most sense to me.
I kind of.
I've taken the charges four times, the answer's no, but, you know.
Not that I want to.
We're going to make that decision, I can say.
Not that I want them to give away how they either are priming from a public hearing standpoint, but, I mean, you could literally copy paste a Facebook page into a Word document and call it archive, right? I don't think that's good. Yeah, I'm just wondering exactly what it is that it, well, why.
You want more information?
Would it help if I arranged a presentation for you as council members to see it, and I can do that? I've got a copy of it in.
That would be great, that would be great.
I thought one of the slideshows talked about the technical detail on how they access the data, it's not just how we increase the amount of. the, and probably the data, it's not just how they increase the amount of.
Right.
They want real support or something.
It's just weird, because you've got, Facebook literally has a history of everything ever put on there. And yeah, there are bots that, you know, put stuff onto pages that none of us can control bots, but, and Facebook's trying to remove those all the time, but it's like, why wouldn't we need to archive it if there's?
The issue that they brought up is, people can go in and make comments and then have second thoughts and they can delete it. Or, like, we could go up and delete a post, like, I'll, I'll admit today, I, I put something up and I meant, now for some reason, my personal page has tied to the town's page because of the community thing, which I don't like at all, but that was the only way I could set it up. So I thought I was posting to my personal page and it went to the town's page, so I went and deleted it quick. And, I mean, it wasn't, it was, you know, it wouldn't have been anything horrible anyway, but, so people can go on, like, we could go in and delete posts if, if something happened and it became controversial and we're like, oh, we just need to take this down. Well, then we don't have proof, no one has proof of that, but then someone could come and say, well, I saw this on Facebook, I want your public, public access, you know, I want to make a public access request. And then we would have to get it to them, but we wouldn't be able to actually give it to them, because it no longer existed on the Facebook page. So, or you have people that, when they close their account, like, if you were to delete your Facebook account, all of the comments that you ever put on anybody's Facebook page apparently disappear. So that's where they're coming at in those cases.
In case we had to prove something that an employee wrote or someone outside.
Yeah.
Okay.
I was just wondering something that Karen put out. And maybe this explains something. Porter County, it's much larger, but they spent five thousand with this organization. But the county has more than fifty social media accounts. And it lists Facebook, Google, so forth. And then the last thing is, the department's wishing to establish a new social media account must notify the commissioners. I would interpret this, that, for whatever their fee is for five thousand, that encompasses all of the, just like we would have with the place and the fire. I mean, I'm not certain, but the way I read this, it looks like, you know, just one account covers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So maybe Karen, it's just a matter of we get a quote from them for what we, we know our social media pages are, and then we agree to the contract itself. I think we all agree in concept with it, right? So go ahead and have Karen get a quote.
Yep, I do.
Okay. Next I have conflict of interest statements. Turn that one over, Karen.
I think I have them all now. So I have a total of five conflicts of interest statements. One from Ginny Monroe, she works for a trailer group with whom the town does a lot of work. She also is starting Gigi's Kiln, which is doing some work with a shark, as discussed at the last meeting, so it was all out in the open. And then she's also a Culver Youth Club board member. William Clevenger works for the Culver Community School Corporation as a substitute teacher. Bill Githens is the treasurer of the Culver Youth Club, he's a Wesley United Methodist Church treasurer, and he's the president of the Culver Union Township Public Library. And then Rich West is a member of Develop Culver and the Visitor Center. None of these, except for Ginny, I believe have any really pecuniary, or cuneary interest, however, to be as transparent as possible, we're presenting those. I also have one from Terry Wakefield, whose wife owns Suzie Q's embroidery, and she does a lot of embroidery for the different departments, so just putting that out there so that people are aware.
Okay, thank you, Karen. Next we have the regional stellar plan update. And I don't have anything to do on that. I know the message boards are starting to do, roll out the installation. Have they contacted you yet, though, if you are?
Yeah, they were on site earlier this week and met with Karen Schuman, Bob and I, and state out where the sign would go, said they could call in utility locates.
Great.
I had one other item, then, Ginny, you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but at the last Marshall County Crossroads meeting, the committee talked about asking each community and county to contribute professional services to manage the communications reporting and some basic administration items on behalf of the committee. And so the crossroads group asked proposals from trailer group for Oka reporting requirements and with Red Door Marketing for communications. And the proposed fee then from each community is five thousand dollars. And I noted that at the beginning of the year, this year, we had budgeted for this and some administrative or professional expenses we anticipated with either PPR and or trailer to help us prepare our part project grant application along with this. You know, during the application process, we worked with Red Door Marketing on some of this, and trailer group's been involved throughout, so just like to be able to keep them on board moving forward. And like you said, they're asking each community to contribute. So tonight, my request would be to just approve that request on the Marshall County Crossroads to fund the professional services contribution of five thousand dollars and have the invoices and so on.
Karen, Marshall County Crossroads set up their own nonprofit and bank account. So I assume it would have to be a contract with them, because they're gonna deposit funds into that, their own account. But there's also a possibility that you would not get the request, because they're trying to raise money for operations from other organizations as well. But that just started, so down the road, it might be that you just don't get invoiced at all if they're able to get some of the private industry to put those for running the operations and the marketing and communication stuff. So just kind of a background story on that.
Well, if we approve it, five thousand, if we approve it, would come in last? Or might not even come in at all?
Yeah, well, they're wanting each community to be that, be substantial, will pass, will pass would be a lower amount, because they're so small. But it is possible that if some of the private industry people they're seeking it from step up, that would be the case.
So there's really no reason we can't, no reason not to hold off and see what happens?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's, we're kind of, we're kind of hoping to get some response. Because we, we kind of feel like, we keep going back to the communities to support all the effort, but it'd be great if the private industry wanted to get involved.
We don't have to write a check.
Keep that as an FYI for now, in case that request.
I agree, I agree.
Yeah. And you may hear other communities have already moved forward and approved, because they had meetings before that message got out.
Right.
Just a heads up there, but.
Thank you.
Okay. Stellar plan update then.
Four of the ten property owners on Lake Magg's Trail Base Two on Main Street have signed a purchase agreement that was offered to them by RW South Rite and Way Acquisition. That was as of Friday, I don't know that we've had any this week. Sally and I talked about one, so hopefully that was another one coming in.
It should be.
Good. And State Rose Tenon sidewalks in West Jefferson, I mean, I have a building bidding on those two last week. They were bidding together to one project in the low winters, Bradley Construction out of South Bend, which did eight hundred fifty-three thousand five hundred dollars. Our construction estimate, you know, from three or four years ago, originally was eight forty-nine, and reported nine thousand fifty dollars, so it's a little higher than what was in our construction budget, but pretty close, pretty happy with it. And we're also looking at maybe a small change order that might save, bring it down, maybe another thousand or so. Once in that reviews the bid and issues the contractor a notice to proceed, construction will likely start to march on that project. And trailer group will be providing construction inspection services and the local manager will come for our people. Four stellar updates.
Any questions on the stellar updates? All righty. We'll go to town, we have a large report.
Next meeting, council will open bids for the twenty twenty-one dating program. And that was placed in the pilot news, they posted online and said writing for bidders. If I'm familiar with those, you can help do that.
Is that community casting?
Yes.
Okay, just making sure it's on the suffered name.
Town Hall, wanted to bring this up. We've been closed other by appointment for several weeks now, and just wanted to bring up what we think the plan should be for reopening. Kind of really discussed it. I think Karen and I chatted a little bit about what she'd like to see and what makes sense. And we talked about possibly looking at kind of a March building date as a reasonable timeframe to open back up to the public. Keeping, assuming that the county mask ordinance is being placed, or whatever state or county departments are placing, you know, continue those. And the only caveat we had is that I think we both felt that, you know, using the county scores and the state mapping metrics that they use, that Marshall County was at a score three in that red category that we would probably pull off of doing that, even at March first. And then kind of similar thing, as far as use of the beach lodge, and I don't know if Amber's on here tonight, but we had talked about, you know, just giving her some guidance on what the beach lodge scheduling would look like moving forward. Whether or not these meetings, planning commissioner BZA should continue here, or if all of something should be back to town council, you know, in March or April. Yeah, the advantage of this room is considerably larger, but being over there also has some conveniences, I think, for Karen and I with having all our files accessible and being able to be on the town network. And the plan BZA, the same stuff, there's materials over there that they can take advantage Any guidance or input on that? Reopening council, or town hall, and the meeting's getting moving forward.
So let's start with the town hall, reopening March first, instead of by appointment only if we're still in the category we're in, and they're still in mask mandate, would you all be comfortable with that?
Yeah, I would. And if you're in the red, you'd not real?
Right, so then I think you just take it, you can we get that going until you move down to the orange.
Yeah. Knowing that that would be our guidance, we could just for now authorize Karen to follow through with that plan, unless it is red county, and then we'll take it up at the council meeting in March, does that sound good?
Yeah.
So can I have some motion to authorize Karen to follow those guidelines for now, until we get a town manager in place?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, and then the second half was when to, how to treat the beach lodge. I think right now Amber's letting eight people come in for like yoga classes, or ceramic classes are eight people as well. So she looking for guidance on whether we should expand or just keep that policy.
No, I think she was just asking about what the council's.
If someone wants to.
Scheduling, yeah, so she could kind of get a feel for what spring and summer availability would be in the building. I think she was fine with whatever you recommend, but, yeah, like I said, each, each location kind of has advantages and disadvantages. One other thing we're looking at is, last, even tonight, I saw we had slow upload speed here, and Karen's looked into, you know, switching our internet service at one of the buildings to hopefully be able to buy better online meeting capabilities. So rather than maybe two both at the same time, we prefer that we start it with whichever building we're gonna be meeting in. Do have a good setup over here, but again, all the council meetings, my commission, BZA over here, that knocks out Tuesday nights and one Thursday months.
I mean, I'd be favorable to moving council meetings, other meetings back to, to the town hall, with the provision that it's not, that the public still has to engage online. I mean, I think that road is too small to hold it, wide up to, to public attendance until we're much further down the road. So I mean, I would be fine if we have our meeting there, we have social distance and mask, but the public, and, and if somebody who's a special appointment wants to make some special presentation and schedules it in advance, that then the public still can be, be a quite soft team promoted.
I know the orange status, you can have fifty people or more gather, and under red status, it's twenty-five people or less. Yeah, yeah. So now I'm starting to think about beach lodge, like in terms of what we would tell Amber, you know, should we stay with the current policy through March first and then reevaluate where, like, you know, if someone wanted a family reunion here, it's probably gonna be more than eight people, but if she followed the county guidelines or the state guidelines, she would be allowed right now to let there be more people than eight. Right? So we probably do need to give her some guidance on what to follow there.
I'm confident Amber could do a little research and make you guys a great recommendation. Let you discuss it.
Keep it status quo for now. Okay, so, and, but we're moving to, back to the old conference room, do you want to start that at the next meeting, or wait till March on that?
I would just suggest March, because I think today we put out our first advertisement for one of the, it was BZA, I think it was, I'll be here in this building still, so if everybody's okay with that, I guess March.
Starting with the first meeting in March, okay. Set with three, Karen? All right.
Just a quick update, Ginny and I met with, I think, for Culver Academies to inform him of the council decision to move forward with trail project, Lake Magg Trail Base Three. And at that point, he did request a chance to go back to his board, to ask them one more time to consider possibly participating with us, and looking at the abandoned rural location inside of Academy Road, and ask for basically the first meeting in February, and I think Karen and I are comfortable with that, and I think we'll be actually moving in the beginning of this year. Ginny, keep posted on that. I put together a transition plan, a council liaison posted, we discussed some at the last meeting, but there were some where there weren't anyone assigned, so I took that over to myself, if anyone needs to switch, or if there's any issues, or further discussion on that, I think that right now, or I'll. Or, I guess maybe I had any questions or concerns on that?
Yeah, have you guys, anyone? I know Jonathan also signed staff members, et cetera, but if you haven't taken a look at that, give us a heads up in the next twenty-four hours or so, so we can reassign or, you know, that sort of thing.
If you want to, hot tip would be to do a search for your name, see where your name appears, and read that section. You don't want to read it all ten pages.
I have a question, Bill. Your liaison, you have both police and fire, right?
Yep.
And we're looking for a liaison for building, is that right?
That was one that we didn't assign that night, and I think I put Bill G, I think I put Bill G in there in the thing, but again, if that, you want to move one or discuss that first?
No, I was gonna recommend Bill for.
I think I did put him in there.
The building, but I didn't know whether.
Well, and I would, and I would recommend putting all the emergency services together and let Bill have a.
Own one?
Yeah.
Alright, I'll take.
I mean, I, I mean seriously, why split up emergency services?
Alright, I'll take, I'll take fire.
And Wayne. And Wayne.
So Bill C., Gene, we'll leave you at the building department.
So I get everything with power.
Yep.
And Bob Porter, who's doing Bob?
Sally and Rich.
I believe that.
Yeah, so some went to Sally and some went to Rich.
They're taking on really specific projects that are.
No problem.
Um, there's no any, no further questions or comments on that one. I have two special event permit requests and I think one of these came in after we extended it out, so it's a late addition. We have an event request from the Culver Farmers Market for the 2021 season, same schedule they followed in previous years, so Saturdays during the season and then a shorter Tuesday night season. And I think we might have a couple, maybe, or Chad's on here, I think Tracy was going to be on it, you guys had any questions for them? Yeah, I see what's on there, so I don't know.
So it's a special event request for, for the parks, for season in a park?
Yes.
Farmers market season in a park, okay.
So I believe it's, is it March or April Chad that you start for Saturdays?
May.
May. We start the, I think it's second week of May on, for Saturdays.
Have you all talked with Amber yet about your plan for schedule, et cetera?
Yes, Ginny, she, her and I chatted, I think she is in the loop to be part of the sign off on the special request, so she contacted me just to verify the dates and the same kind of schedule.
Okay, thank you, Tracy.
I just have a question on the farmer's market. Does, do we have any kind of, do we have any kind of an agreement with them as to what they can and cannot do?
So the main thing, the main thing would be, I guess, you know, what's included on the permit. And the event description that they provided this year was that it'd be a weekly farmer's market with vendors selling locally grown, made or crafted food and craft items at local nonprofit organizations informational and fundraising foods. So that's what you would be, you know, if you approve it tonight, that's what you'd be allowing them to do moving forward.
I think it's great that, you know, we have the farmer's market and we have the vendors and the produce and so forth, but I'm a little concerned about, you know, social action. I don't want to be too restrictive, but I'd rather see and stick to basically what they do best and have some restriction, so we're not having demonstrations and one thing, yeah, or using the farmer's market as a conveyance for demonstrations and so forth.
Sure, but I think one thought I had about that was maybe asking the group for a list of events or who would be there ahead of time and allowing someone at the town to check that off, would that help? Whether it's Amber or the town manager, I would assume most of their place, that was kind of my thought.
Yeah.
Would that be acceptable?
Definitely have.
Yeah, I mean, for timing wise, I don't know, I guess I'd let Tracy or Chad address whether or not a council meeting two weeks ahead of time is, that would work or.
It might be. Generally speaking, a lot of the, especially a lot of the nonprofit groups, the churches, the school, you know, the two school service projects and stuff like that, a lot of times, even as the vendor coordinator, I don't know until the night before. So two weeks before would be a challenge for a lot of those types of groups that really allow the market to be a hub for the community.
So another thought would be, I think you know, you guys have been there for a while, you know what your list probably is most years, I mean, would it be possible to get that at the beginning of the year and then, you know, deal with fluctuations or changes in that?
You said it has to be a Marshall County organization and then exceptions beyond that would be. Voice out to the, you know, Lions Club wants to have a booth there than they, although you said that they were in that list, but.
And we were talking last night about maybe Culver Youth Club setting up a booth there, you know, to register kids, you know, things like that.
Again, I think, so we don't get into being too micro manliness, you know, I would be comfortable saying it's Marshall County organization, you know.
Is it a nonprofit or any Marshall County organization?
In the past, we've only allowed nonprofits from the county or with a Culver address or groups associated with one, so like students from Culver Academies doing a senior service project were associated with the school.
And just to give you a sense, Chad and I did go through thinking about our nonprofits as we're getting ready for the coming season and probably in any given season, and this is the summer season that we're talking about, we have close to 30 nonprofits in and out. Some are super regular, like the Lions Club and the Union Church, that solves the rugs and the Friends in the Library, Marshall County 4H, so a lot of them are regular, they are there almost every week, some every week, and then others are more frequent but not weekly, though to your point, you know, sometimes the Culver Youth Club will be there just kind of giving out information where they certainly could be, we would welcome that. Kiwanis, Culver Youth Sports Clubs, Make Max Association, library events, so those are the type of things, and like Chad said, sometimes I'll get a call or he'll get a call a couple of days in advance that, you know, somebody wants to come and set up the Indiana Adoption Program. Those are the kinds of things that, like Chad said, do kind of bring that community by, but also brings more people to the market and to town. But so, yeah, but there's a way that we can capture that in a way that is, can then be presented to you all, happy to do that, and, you know, in a way that also makes it still a little bit nimble for some of those more last minute, last minute things.
This is that's the direction you want to go, you want to see a list and start a season approving whatever vendors and nonprofits that they've had in and out over the past year. I mean, you guys know your vendors and your nonprofits pretty well at this point. Is that how you want to handle it? Or want to go to the, any Marshall County organization or nonprofit? I mean, I, I think that you're, you're referring to demonstration or political activism versus a nonprofit like Boys and Girls Club.
I like that social forum.
Scouts.
I like your term social forum.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with any of the Marshall County organizations.
No, I don't think any of those.
Profit, nonprofit, a social, or any of the local ones for that matter, but I don't want to be, see it become a political or social forum for anything.
Yeah, the only political groups we've had in the past are the Marshall County Democrats did a voter registration drive and Jackie Walorski and Tim Harmon both did campaign booths. So I guess that would be what you would want us to not do.
Well, I think, you know, I. Yeah, obviously we don't set those up, you know, all you on Friday and say they want to do it on Saturday, do they? Those registration guy, drive.
Tracy might remind me how long we knew in advance on voter registration. I know Jackie Walorski, we knew about three days out. Tim Harmon was before my time as manager, I was a vendor then, but I wasn't managing.
I, I mean, I think the different one was really just voter registration across the board, so I would hope that there would not be opposition to general voter registration, but it was probably a week or so, I mean, we would have known, would have known, they were going, the voter registration was going all over, they were at Plymouth Farmers Market, I believe, and a lot of other places around the county on both sides.
Tracy, do you know, does the Plymouth or other surrounding markets allow other elected officials campaigning to have booths? Is that typical or not?
I don't know, Chad, I really don't know. I mean, I don't, Jonathan, I'm not sure, I don't know, Chad, if you know their rules.
I, I don't know on that one, that's not, that's not one of the things that I've coordinated with others about. I can, I can check.
I do know this has become an issue at the IU Farmers Market because you have social justice groups on both sides of the issue now fighting and demonstrating at Farmers Market where they actually shut it down in Bloomington, IU campus, so I, I'm assuming that's what you're referring to.
Yes, exactly. I mean, I, I didn't even go further to say, you know, excluding political events. I mean, I think there's a, there's a fine line, like you say, the Boys and Girls Club or Kiwanis or whatever it is, but that's, that's not, to me, that's not as much of an issue as the farmer's market because it's a public gathering, becomes a public forum for, you know, all different types of things other than the market. I think the important thing about the market is get back to basics as to what, what you're doing.
Alright, well, it opens in May, so let's take a look at whatever the list is and we'll address it at the next meeting, if that's enough time, if you need more time, that's okay too. From a scheduling standpoint, I assume no one has an issue with scheduling or where the farmer's market's been setting up. It's been an ideal location right in front of the lake there, and I do think it brings a nice amount of traffic to town and businesses. Particularly on this side of town and also down in Culver. So.
Agreed.
Alright, back to you, I'm sorry.
So just to clarify, the request then that Tracy or Chad would send a list of potential nonprofits or other organizers that would be at the market for the next meeting. And Tracy or Chad, since I won't be here, Amber's going to handle, kind of be in the front person for our special event, so if you want to send that to her, that would be great.
Okay, we'll do.
Thanks. The next special event request I have is for the Adaptive Water Ski Clinic on July 22nd. Third, it's a two day event, so we, we called it several, twice in the past, last year was canceled due to COVID, they used the East Pavilion and requested the courtesy period be closed during the skiing those two days. Again, it was the same request that was approved in 19 and approved last year, though they didn't enough moving forward with it. I'd ask for a motion to approve a special event permit and invoice $250 for the Adaptive Water Ski Clinic.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Last thing I had is a separate town highlights document that I sent to the council, it's been posted on her website. Just a couple of quick things was, leaving the housing, we've got 72 units in the work, I think, we've seen 16 of the, of the new development come online in the last year. Highlights of our community matching, community process matching grant projects, some of the OKR projects that we finished, and one thing that is required, there's notes from each department, but each year, INDOT and other agencies, we received several money from, ask for an update on our compliance with ADA and Title VI requirements, and so there's a middle in there, and those will be posted online too. ADA, obviously the building that we're in here was a big step, adding access throughout the building and making it ADA compliant, elevator, restroom, et cetera, that was big. And then we also did quite a few sidewalk ramps this year, Rusty Process Matching Grant Program, I think the total was in the twenties for once, 22. So we've set some goals there in our Complete Streets Program to try and do 50 of those every five years, so did a nice chunk last year, and several of them were around Town Hall which were identified as high priority ones, the town's original study in 2012, so couldn't get those crossed off the list and see those, be taken care of. And that's it, that's all I got.
Great, thanks Jonathan. That ADA or the Adaptive Ski Clinic, that specifically brings in ADA clientele, the population that wouldn't normally have access to skiing on the lake. And I'm wondering if the council would be willing to waive that fee for that organization? I think it is such a great clinic, it allows people who wouldn't normally be able to get on a water ski or even in the water, I just don't feel like we should be charging for that, you know, if we really do value making that lake accessible to everyone. What are your thoughts on that?
I'd move that we waived the fee for that group.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you guys. Alrighty. Department head reports, is Jeff on the line for EMS tonight? Okay. Terry, Wakefield, are you on the line for the fire department?
He's trying to, he's trying to.
He's listed there.
Yes, he is.
He's muted.
Oh, we'll unmute you guys.
I've muted all meetings, back to.
Jeff and Terry, if you're on the line, you're working on, trying to unmute you. First, click on mute all and then unclick, like click it twice or something to see that.
I believe it's star six or star seven, Terry, if you can hear me, I'm looking for the instruction, if you dial one of those, it'll unmute you.
It's star six.
Star six, Karen says.
Amber, are you on the line for the park department? And if so, can you speak?
Yes, I'm online.
Okay, go ahead, Amber.
Nothing from me, I just wanted to thank you guys for approving that ceramics class. We put it out this week and I had everything full within an hour and a half and could hardly keep up with the responses, so thank you, there's definitely a lot of interest and hopefully we can get another class, more classes running up in March.
All right, thank you, Amber.
Yeah, that's all, thank you.
Okay. Wayne, are you on the line? Okay, Terry Wakefield or Jeff, are you on the line yet? All right. Let's go on to, is anyone on the line for Plan Commission or BCA? Okay.
What, what was the upshot of your last meeting?
What was that, I'm sorry?
Do you have a good, at the last meeting, did you have a hearing on this house or?
Yeah, it stays here. There were only three members present. Basically, two of them had medical issues and couldn't make it. It wasn't planned absence. So we only had three members and, uh, a decision requires a majority vote. You have that three. And so they did hear us discuss it and each member read their findings and facts. And of the three there, it was two to one against approving it. And, uh, so he was allowed at that point to put it on hold until the next meeting and hoping that there'll be five members present for that.
The other two people were going to allow it, one was not going to allow it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I got it wrong. Yes, thank you. Two, one, two were four, one was against. One thing we actually talked about Chuck, I and Ty, I had their meeting this morning in the county. What they do is they have several alternates for their BCA. So he said they have three or four members of the Plan Commission that, um, are appointed to BCA as alternates. In a case like that, where you find out, you know, someone can't make it. Or the other case we had that night is a Culver Academy's case and we couldn't vote on either. There's really three members there and one of the members is an academy employee, so he abstained. So that may be something to think about. Chuck and I talked about today. It's pretty easy to do, you just designate a few more Plan Commission members, basically. And if someone's got a conflict, you know, ahead of time, or you find out a couple days ahead of time, one of the members can't make it. You know, you've got an alternate there that it's easy to bring in. Plan Commission member, generally they're familiar with all your ordinances already and it's definitely.
So is this the house that was supposed to be a garage project and it got even torn down or something?
The, the issue was that, um, they came for variance for an addition for a porch. And, uh, the members felt like it was expressed to them as simply an addition to the existing structure. And then a few days after the hearing, the entire structure was torn down. But they had applied for a demolition permit, so, um, Chuck and I had access to that permit. We were aware, I guess it didn't come up at the first hearing, which I, I must admit to that a little bit. And so the members felt like, you know, that information was retell from them or not clearly expressed to them at the first hearing. And so they then had a number of meetings, kind of reviewing that and decided that there was enough evidence that they weren't, didn't have access to it at the first meeting to read here and that's what they were doing with this house. So the house itself is essentially, what's being done there is permitted. It's just the porch.
Is the height, what, and then it's like really tall?
It's, uh, that one will be allowed to be 35 feet high, which is what our ordinance says. And, um, we're, we've been back here with the meeting and he promised us that it will be under 35 feet. It's not, at least at the time of the meeting, wasn't fully finished, but it's, I'm sure 34.9, but it'll.
Does that include the roof?
Yes.
Okay.
Everything on that sharp.
Okay.
And I've got Terry on the line here and I'm sure he enjoyed my BCA. Terry, can you hear me?
No, I, I just have a few things to bring up. We're the, uh, I just got a few people that are going to be going into classes and I still don't have my grant back, but it looks like it's going to be in hundreds instead of thousands.
That was hundreds, not hundred thousand, right, Terry?
Correct.
Good job.
Anything else, Terry?
No, not really. Hopefully we can get this security thing taken.
Yeah. Thank you.
If I may just follow up on the BCA report, if you're going to allow substitution, like Jonathan was discussing, you're going to have to amend an ordinance or be something, this body is going to have to, to allow that to take place. Uh, just so you know. And, uh, as Jonathan pointed out, the, uh, it was two were going to allow it, one wasn't, I guess, that he withdrew. So we can see if you can get one of those two members that weren't there to go along with what's going on. But, um, there, there are some issues. So if you do decide to do a substitution, if there were some issues, I, I think with kind of our rules, you may want to take a look at, at tweaking those a bit. Just.
All right.
So yeah, that, that one bill will be back on the agenda for February then when all the more members are present.
Okay, so we did a Plan Commission, BCA, Redevelopment Commission, I believe, just met minutes and claims before the call. So. Trade Commission, is anyone on the line for the Trade Commission? Don't seem to have a report there. Um, anything else for utilities, Bob Porter, are you on the line? Okay. Um, so we'll go on to clerk's report.
I have two claims for you to approve that were over $2,000. The first one is for Indiana Department of Environmental Management for $4,400. And that would come out of sewer and it's for an IBM permit to, to operate the sewer plant. And then the other one is the Indiana Department of Transportation with the Community Crossing Grant. Um, they go ahead and pay us in advance and then if we come in under what they paid us, then we have to pay back. So we are under by $4,425. So I've got to check to pay them back, so we're all straight with them. If I could get a motion to approve those.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The second thing I have is. The banking, the cash management agreement with TCU expires at the end of this month. And they presented a new agreement, which I provided a copy of. Um, obviously with the situation, the one situation, the interest rate is not anywhere near what we enjoyed the last two years. But in checking with the county, it is close to their rate that they received from TCU. And she indicated that, um, they did do an RFP out and the banks, it was, TCU came back with the highest rate. So if I could get a, uh, motion to renew the cash management agreement with Teachers Credit Union and authorize the council president for treasures assignment.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Annually, I try to hold a Board of Finance meeting at the beginning of the year just to present, uh, information to you all on the state of the finances for the town. And I was wondering if we could have that on Tuesday, February 9th, which will be before the next meeting and start at either 5:30 or 5:45. I don't plan to have it a ton, but just to review and allow you all to ask questions. And hopefully I'm close to having the annual financial report somewhat finished and you all can improve that at that time.
So this would be the board as a whole?
The board, yeah. It's the whole council, we just.
The council as a whole.
So you wanted a work session?
It would be a work session.
Okay. So move. I agree.
Yeah, okay, I'll, I'll set it up.
And then finally, as Jonathan alluded to earlier, um, we've been talking with South Shore IT. They are able to save us, they, in reviewing their contract, they've given us a, a discount on our annual, our monthly contract with them. So we're saving some money, but encouraged us to use some of that savings to get a better internet plan. Uh, and so Chris, also is media com to get us in contact. We could get, my suggestion would be wherever we decide to land for town council meetings, that we put media com in at that location, just to improve the internet speeds and especially for the meetings. I believe it was $147 a month in the download speed, but it would, you would see a significant improvement, shall we say.
For sure.
So, uh, just to let you know, I'm still working on getting information from media com. They, um, hopefully can have something next month. If it's a situation where maybe I can get it over here for a month and then switch it over to the, to town hall, it might be an option.
Or if they might do a two for this town or something.
Well, we'll try to get us, there's no government rates. It's media com, so. And then finally, just a reminder, um, tomorrow afternoon, we are having an open house here at the Beach Lodge for Jonathan to give you one last opportunity to convince him to stay. And if you can't do that.
Will you don't have the community to show up?
Yes, and if you can't do that, you can wish him well and, um, and send him off with all of our appreciation. So please come and have cake and we'll have, have something for, as a memento for people to sign.
True. Thank you, Terry. Um, attorney's report.
Uh, frustrated attorney's report. Uh, as you all aware, our, our, uh, foreclosure sheriff's sale was scheduled for this afternoon at one o'clock yesterday, late afternoon. I received a notice of bankruptcy stay filed by an attorney in Fort Wayne on behalf of Scotty Van Haak. Uh, I'm not a bankruptcy attorney. It's a area that I don't practice in and don't know great deal about. Which you'll understand kind of where I'm, I'm starting to head with all of this. Uh, I will tell you that, um, as I understand it, uh, there was, the filing was for chapter 13. You may know more about bankruptcy filings than I do. Typically, uh, the average homeowner would file a chapter seven asking for a discharge because their debts are, you know, a hundred thousand dollars and their assets are 10,000 dollars. In this case, uh, chapter 13 was filed. Chapter 13 means that we sort of have a plan to, you know, juggle things around, get a little bit of relief and not necessarily just discharge everybody that you owe, but pay them back either some portion of what you owe them or, or something along lines. In this particular case, it was a chapter 13 bankruptcy filing. I, I think that that was partially because of the fact that our sheriff's sale and our foreclosure case was based on an interim action and, you know, under the circumstances, they were better able to get a stay under a chapter 13 than a chapter seven. Any event, as you know, Mr. Van Haak has been somebody that has been, uh, skill game, if you would, uh, quite some time. But does he own the property, doesn't he? Is 27 group bank, is it a foundation? Uh, and I don't know that this is going to necessarily be solved, but there's certainly a lot of questions. And I, I guess, having said all of these things, um, well, let me just back up a little bit further. I am of the opinion that, given the, all of the circumstances of this, that a right bankruptcy attorney, and maybe I would find out otherwise, could file something either to dismiss the plan, to, uh, get this stay lifted as it is, as to our property. Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm understanding that there are several possible options by which we could, early on, with the proper motion and a proper hearing before the judge, move this thing along so that we don't have to wait another year before we get into a sheriff's sale. And we're not going to get it done in two months, uh, probably four or five, if we find somebody that kind of goes along with at least some of the things that, that I'm thinking at this point. So, um, I, I guess that's kind of what I'm, I'm, I'm looking for. Uh, to see if we, if you're interested in allowing me to approach somebody to get that job done. Uh, I have some people in mind. I can tell you that, uh, you know, I'm sure they're going to charge more than what I've been charging you. Philip Passanda, Orange Thornbury is not a bankruptcy attorney that I know of, but I know that he has some folks in his office that are very good. I will tell you that I would have loved, uh, having Mark Wagner still, white former law partner, who's passed away a little years ago. He, he did this kind of thing, he was very good at it and he wouldn't have charged us so much, but he's not an option. I've worked with Bill Jonas, an attorney in South Bend. I think he's now affiliated with Mayo Refill Firm. I'm also familiar with another firm, even the Mayo Refill Firm, that, uh, again, it's a bigger firm, it's going to be more money. So I have some of those options. I don't know if any of you know of anybody, have any feelings, have any thoughts or suggestions, whether, I guess what I'm suggesting is, is let me make some field as to who that might be, what the fees might be. Send you all an email and get a general feeling from you as to. I'm hopeful that in this little, uh, litigation program that we're playing, this, this being Van Haak, that this is his last move. I think I alluded to you earlier that, that he still had this possible move. That's one of the reasons why I didn't want to, to, uh, pay the real estate taxes and be out $35,000 while we still fiddle around and possibly leave with him to do whatever. So, um, I, I don't know how you want to proceed. I'll take whatever direction you all have, but, uh, I guess I'm, my recommendation at this point is that somebody other than Joe Wagner probably needs to look into this, give us a recommendation as to how to proceed, hopefully file the kinds of papers that need to be filed so that we can get this thing, the stay lifted and reschedule the sheriff's sales. So we can, I, I would say this, and I think I've said this to others. Uh, I learned from the attorney from SRI that was handling the sheriff's sale today, uh, that there were several people didn't get noticed ahead of time that was canceled, showed up and added interest. Uh, and that's at 101,000 or whatever. Our, our league's about 71,000 some.
107 total.
107 total. And, uh, the really big taxes are 35 some, so again, 107 total. So there's some people interested in at least, uh, securing the property. It would cover a lot of it's of us, a lot of it's of the county.
My recommendation here, I mean, 13 is a reorganization, which is what he's trying to do. And my, my suggestion is that, you know, we go for the jugular, I hate to say it, and kind of say it. And yeah, it's going to cost us some money, but we want to. We want to end this charade that he's put on us. And, you know, it's going to cost us. I mean, we've got this base and if we want to be done with this, we got to put on our big boy pants.
Set a motion to offer us Jim to, um, seek and seek out an attorney who's capable.
So move, so move.
The biggest hammer in the camp.
That's exactly right. It's hammer time.
Okay, so the motion, I'm putting words into mouth, Bill and Bill, would be to offer us Jim to seek out an attorney who could interrupt that filing and make our own filing. And, and have Jim get back to us to get a general feel individually for each of you. If Jim sends a memo, only reply to Jim, not the group, okay?
Right.
Okay, so.
You have a second?
Yes.
I have a second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I'm going to be out of the office for a couple of days, but I'm still going to be working on this because I, well, obviously didn't. Two non kind of attorney kind of things. Um, I, I will plan to attend future. I will plan to attend future meetings online, unless you guys all, whoever makes a request that I attend, or unless I think I need to personally attend. And if that's the case, then I'll be happy to come down. Otherwise, I'll try to look in and see what's working. And then my final thing is, I'd like to thank Jonathan for his help in all these several years. I'm not going to be able to attend your open house tomorrow, I'm sorry. I'm going to be out of town. I think he's done an exceptional job for Culver. I think he's done, he's contributed outside of Culver on the community level or on the county level. You know, you ask somebody for assistance, and it's so refreshing that he not only gives you that assistance, but he does it enthusiastically and eagerly and, you know, just always a fine job. Highlight, this thing, I guess, is probably it. And I wish, wish you well. That's all I have.
Thank you, Jim. Is anyone on the line? Please talk, government's violation? And if not, at this point, we'll take citizen input if we're able to unmute you.
Yes, this is Sue McInturf. Can you hear me?
Yes, Sue.
Okay. I just want to make a statement. As Jim Clevenger stated, I wanted to reiterate that I have never in all my years on many boards in Culver, including the CRC, done anything that is unethical or illegal. In fact, I've been assured by the members of those boards that the reason I was asked to serve is because of my reputation as honest, forthright person. The lies that were purported based on opinions of one person, Lee Marshall, who is making, who was making assumptions. My only interest is in doing what I believe was best for the businesses, the town, and the residents. So to have a person spread lies about my work has been extremely disheartening. For the record, I've chosen not to spit my name for the CRC for 2021 for three reasons. One is I've been on the board for CRC for four years, and one to give others a chance. I always say new blood is a good thing. My business is going through, number two is my business is going through big changes and will take a lot of my time. And number three is, I have no wish to spend any more time defending myself against those who choose to be ill-informed bullies. Thank you.
Sue, is anyone else on the line for citizen input? Tom, I can see you trying to talk, but I think you might be muted.
Oh, yes, there we go. Yeah, I hit the wrong icon. I don't want you to see me. Jim already complained about me eating Teresa's chili.
You can hear me now, though.
You can hear me, okay. As a former CRC member, I'd like to thank Rich West for his leadership as president of the CRC. Also, my thanks to Sue McInturf for her years of dedication to the CRC. Thank you, Rich, and thank you, Sue.
And I'll add to that list, Tom, and say thank you as well for many committed years to the CRC. I thought that you and Rich and Sue teamed up on several projects that came to fruition. So we appreciate all that energy and willingness. It's not easy to have evening meetings in your life. So thanks, and yes, thanks, Sue, and Rich as well. Other citizen input, is there anyone else on the line? If so, please unmute yourself. Okay, I'll go on to council issues. Bill Giffens, council issues.
Rich, Sue, thank you for your time on CRC.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And Jonathan, please don't go.
Not what he said earlier, but thank you.
Rich, council issues?
No.
Mr. Clevenger, council issues?
Well, I'd like to echo Bill's comment and thank Rich for his years of service on the CRC. I would encourage Jonathan to apply again.
Thank you. Take it under consideration.
Sally, council issues?
No, I'd say I want to reiterate what you and Bill said, that Rich and Sue and also Tom have done wonders with the years they've served on the CRC. And I too would like Jonathan to stay. But I know we're not going to talk him into it.
Well.
Is that a motion?
That's my big council issue. Jonathan, as our attorney so eloquently put it, as I've been trying to touch you as frequently as possible, I keep remembering so many great times with you. And then we were sitting here at the work session discussing what can we want in town manager? And basically, we kept saying, we want this, we want Jonathan, from your communication skills, your professionalism, your ability to manage five bosses, a staff, your strong relationship with our clerk and deputy clerk and our superintendents, your productivity level is just unbelievable, even in the year of COVID. When you look at that report that you wrote, it's astonishing how many balls you kept in the air and just how well you did it. And if someone had worked closely with you all that time, I was never short of amazed. So I know all of us combined have probably fifty years of council representation here, and by far, you have been the best. You raised the bar so high that it made today's conversation quite easy, actually, to be able to tell our consultant, we want a great project manager because we have a great project manager. We want a professional communicator, we want a leader. We want someone who understands the regional leadership qualities that you bring, and hard to even put into words how grateful we are for everything you did here. So we didn't put it into words, we put it into a picture that we want to give you. It's sort of quintessential you because when we did Stellar, this was a project that I think you got kind of passionate about, it was at Little Culver something. And everybody and their mother has taken a picture by that sign. And you not only brought Stellar to this community and a bunch of projects, but you brought one of the most popular locations in town. And so we wanted you to be able to put this on your desk and remember fondly all your time here. And so that is for you. And it happens to be a fall shot that I took in the fall, and it's got the lighthouse in there. So we thought that was sort of a good view for you to remember. And I think you spent some time down by that sign a time or two, and in this park a time or two as well.
Yeah, pictured myself in all seasons, yes.
So, yeah, we just want to say bravo. Job well done, friend. And I will stop here and ask you to take us to claims votes.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations to you, but time is a football.